Yeah.
Make some people.
I see Mr. Larmour has joined, so, okay, this is our work session where we will go through all the legislation we have.
Hey, guys.
More than the last time, yeah. So, the first one, we talked briefly about ordinance number sixty-two, twenty-twenty. I did it. Hopefully, everybody got the email that said who's doing first and second on the various legislation. Just thought us figured, we do it early, then we don't have to, you can write it down. Any further questions on sixty-two? Mr. Verres, the question would be, does this need first, second, and third, or first?
First, second, and third, please.
Okay, hearing that council, any questions or concerns with going right to one, two, three?
No.
Speak now, okay. Okay, then next up is ordinance sixty.
Are you indicating who's introducing and seconding, or is that already done?
Oh, that wasn't, oh, you didn't see the email.
Oh, I did not.
I have that one, and Dave is the second.
Okay.
Right, Dave.
I can go look for the email while you're talking.
Okay, that's okay, I'm gonna say it again, thanks for reminding me. Ordinance number sixty-three, this is the bonds for the city's fire truck. Mr. Bailey will be the first, Jessica will be the second, and Mr. Verres, please explain.
Okay, all right, so this is a refunding opportunity. Basically, in layman's terms, that's refinancing. Even though we just borrowed this money on January, you know, early January of two thousand nineteen, it's estimated that we can save eighty thousand dollars by doing this. And if you guys all agree to saving money, I'd appreciate it as a one, two, three.
Questions? Anyone have any?
That was a pretty sneaky way to put it, John, but I guess, I guess I'll vote yes on it.
Okay. Yeah, I was a council member myself once.
Hearing no questions, we're on agreement to one, two, three, then we'll proceed in that aspect. Next up is ordinance sixty-four, this is the bonds for the communication system. Jeff, you're the first, with me as the second. Mr. Chief Ripley, where are you?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have anything to add to this, or is this all Mr. Verres, because it's money?
This is all the magic that occurs in the finance department.
Okay, Mr. Verres.
Okay, so this is the five hundred seventy-five thousand, we're gonna be borrowing for a large portion of the potentially six hundred forty-one thousand that we're spending. It would be over a five-year period, and we'd appreciate a one, two, three.
And can you explain where the money's coming from? Because we're gonna only pay for five years, so that's over a hundred and twenty.
Oh, but the money to pay this back will come out of the Safety Service Fund annually.
And that is funded by, keep going.
That is funded by the Safety Service additional point-two-five percent tax that was approved and became effective January first, two thousand nineteen, and replaced a fire levy that expired.
Questions? I just want the public to understand what we're borrowing and how we're gonna pay it, and where did that money come from. We wanna thank you, the public, because it's actually coming out of your taxes. It actually comes out of your taxes, so I want you to be aware. Any questions from council members? If, if none, we'll do one, two, three. Okay, Mr. Garvis, that one's yours. I don't know if he's still here.
No, I was trying to unmute, I got it.
You're mute.
Yep.
We don't wanna hear that wah-wah-wah again.
I have headphones on, yeah, I won't do that.
Save that for next meeting, that would, we could, and just put it in your chair. That'll be cool. All right, resolution number sixty-five is for the amounts and rates for the Budget Commission. It's basically certifying what we get from Summit County. This one was Jessica, with Jeff as the second. Mr. Verres, this is your night.
Oh, my goodness. Yeah, this is, like you said, just approves the rates that we have through the county. If you notice the attachment that was sent, it currently does not include the levy that is expiring this year, because that'll be determined in a few weeks whether that'll be added to these rates. So, one, two, three, because I think we need to get it down to Summit County.
Okay, and do you wanna give a real brief, because the public can't see the attachment?
I can't see it right now myself either. Let's see. Let me pull up my, yeah, let me put my glasses on. I know we got an email today about it.
Turn on the lights, John, geez.
I, I don't know when I, let's see, how's that?
He's in the Batcave.
See, now you should be able to read it.
Yeah. Aye, 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 where is it? And there it is. Again, to put it in attachment. No, that's not it either. Hold on.
Mark could probably explain it.
Yeah, Mark probably has it, he sent it out.
Don't you just need this?
I'm pulling it up right now.
Can you read it backwards? Thank you.
Oh, look at that, look at.
Oh, there it is.
Okay, Mr.
Thank you, Kyle.
Wow, Kyle, you're the best. So, it's the general fund at two-point-five-three, which brings in about a hundred, or one million, one fifty-four, nine thirty-four as an estimate, and then police pension at point-three, which is statutory by state law, brings in a hundred thirty-six, nine forty-nine to our police pension fund.
So, those ones don't, we don't have to vote on them, those two?
No, those are, those are what's called statutory by law. They're inside millage. And of that, two-point-five-three in the general fund, I believe point-three of that is fire pension as well. A lot of communities have a fire pension and a police pension fund individually. Some do not, some only have a police pension fund.
John.
Independence was the same way, we had a general and a police pension.
But, John, the reason for that is that came a lot, that was around long before we paid any pension within the fire department, it was back when we were all volunteering, came from home, so we didn't pay into the pension system.
No, I think you're the only one that can say when we were all back in the, in the day, so.
It's just inappropriate, I see, I see that, I see that out there, so I'm just.
That's the second time you've scotched it tonight, chief.
Yes, it is.
Were you even born yet? Because when I moved here, we were voluntary, we didn't become regular till, I'm not sure you were born yet. It was in the sixties, it was still voluntary, it was an interesting time. And you'd hear the siren go off, the tornado warning siren go off, so it's cool.
Which we still have in its generation.
One about this legislation, sixty-five. Hearing none, we'll go through one, two, three, Ms. Jessica. Thank you. Number sixty-six is the appointment of Melissa Hunter to the civil service due to Mr. Menhart's retirement and resignation. Vinnie, you'll be the first, and Jess will be the second, since you know Melissa very well. Mayor?
Well, Mrs. Hunter had thrown her name into the hat for the open position. I reached out and had a conversation with her regarding what it entailed. I had also talked with Chief Ripley about having a different set of eyes, because her background wasn't in that realm. We have a lot of folks on the board that are from that realm, so we all agreed that having an outside set of eyes to come into the committee might not be a bad thing. So, I'm strongly recommending Mrs. Hunter for that position this evening.
Well, Mr. Menhart was outside of his, because he was never a police or fire, so.
Right.
Questions or comments? We also, we all got her resume, and you can see that she has zero anything to do with the actual being in the police or fire department other than being in chair for the Police, Fire, and Service Department funding the PACs, the two PACs. So, we're, any questions?
I was on civil service before I got elected to council, so, you know, Melissa would be kind of the same idea as I was, having someone that's outside the organization to be on it. So, and she's very passionate about the city of Macedonia, and has everyone's best interest at heart, so I think she's a good pick, and I hope everyone decides to approve her.
Any other comments?
One, two, three.
That's where I was going, yeah, that's, we will do a one, two, three, and then seven, one. You always have the right to vote, yeah, you're may. It's not mandated, none of them are. Okay, the last one is number sixty-seven, I'm taking that one with Mr. Garvis as the second. Is the chief on?
I could probably kick this one off, because I was the one negotiating it. So, we worked with Sagamore Hills Chief Golden and Lieutenant Yakapowicz, and I, and John Verres, had sat down and talked about the next contract. The last one, I think, was a great success, Sagamore Hills had indicated the same. So, we had come to a number that we feel is fair for them and fair for us, and they have agreed to that, they have passed that through their township meeting, and that's what brings us to today, to continue on that service and that collaboration with our neighbors.
Okay, can you talk about the financials, because that's what the public will wanna know?
Sure, there was.
They're providing this service, and they'll wanna know, what are we getting paid for?
So, if, let me grab my packet here.
Mr. Verres, do you know it off the top of your head? Or the bottom?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Okay, so the prior year, the increase, it's gonna be eighty-seven, four sixteen, so it'll be almost twenty-two thousand a quarter, twenty-two, it goes up less than a thousand until twenty-twenty-five, we hit twenty-four thousand, five hundred ninety-six every quarter. So, it's a one point, well, it equals a three percent.
Three percent.
We are only, are we only in this with Sagamore?
No, we also have Norfield Village, and there's expires next year, so we'll be working on that one too. The next big one's gonna be the fire contract, which expires next year as well.
Mayor, can you briefly summarize the factors that go into the numbers? Is it just hours spent, calls taken, a history of, you know, the, looking at number of calls historically?
We, we looked at a bunch of factors to try to determine what was fair, and again, it's a tough thing to determine, because if you go by call volume, Macedonia is far, and I mean, we are astronomically higher than Norfield or Sagamore. So, we tried to just work off of what we had, tried to come up with a number that based on if someone else were to try and make a bid at this, what we felt was fair for them and us. So, we went back and forth, and we spent a lot of hours on what was fair for us and them, and this is really what we came up with, if Chief Golden wants to chime in, I mean, he was a part of those meetings as well, so it was just trying to be fair, and something that was equitable for both of us.
Yeah, that's accurate, mayor, we, you know, we had to go to two dispatchers when, when the state mandated for EMD, you have two dispatches all the time. So, you know, we, we talked about this a lot, and it's the best, best for both, both parties.
And for, for those members that weren't around when the initial contract was entered into the software maintenance and support is additional for this contract too, that the mayor negotiated?
I was gonna ask if we inherited any additional costs with the new dispatch equipment that were, and the new radios, right? I imagine that's included in this.
Well, the cost, the cost of everything that we have, we would have incurred regardless, it's just a matter of them having a share in it. And again, we tried, we tried to look at the call volume and percentage, and I believe of all the calls we had, I believe they were around eleven percent of the calls we get. I mean, again, that's pretty astounding when you look at the number of calls that the city of Macedonia gets versus Sagamore. But, we, we tried to play with those numbers to figure out the fairness of it, and that's what we came up with. But we did add that in, as was said, the support and maintenance will help for things that we have moving forward, any maintenance of any equipment we have. So, again, the equipment we had to get, we had to get regardless, so there was no way out of that.
Right.
And I remember too, Mark had pointed out that when you, if you charge, you know, their cities for, like, a cost for this equipment, then there's an ownership question, so it's really, so that's why they're, they're charging a little extra for the service, because there's no ownership of service, but we really don't wanna put the cost of the actual equipment, give it to anyone else, because it's solely ours.
Makes sense.
Starts the cloud title when that occurs, right?
Right.
And God forbid, they wanted to leave our collaboration, there's, I think there's a six-month clause in there, chief, is that correct? They have to give us six months' notice?
I believe it's ninety days, mayor.
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry, it is ninety days.
Yeah, it's ninety days, written notice. The other thing is the end of support and maintenance is on page three, talks about for twenty-twenty, they paid for twenty-twenty-one, in January, they'll pay three hundred dollars, but it does also increase to twenty-three, forty-one. So, it does have an increase, because the longer it gets, you may have more maintenance. Everyone should have gotten a copy of this, so if you have any questions on it or didn't receive it, but we know, we'll make sure to get it out for you, but it was part of the attachments.
If, if I may add, just so everyone's aware, the, the city's decision to advance into the eight-hundred realm has cost the townships and Norfield Village over a hundred thousand dollars per to equip their departments to communicate, and Sagamore's already purchased their police equipment, and they're in the process of purchasing additional equipment for fire service within Sagamore Hills and in Norfield Center also.
So, Sagamore uses the sheriff's department, do they, or is that Northville?
Northville Center.
Okay, in the sheriff's department, does the sheriff capture all the cost for any increase? Or, and, or do they put that forward into a share with the?
If you look, if you look at Northfield Center's contract with the sheriff, all their communication shows as a zero cost. And it's all in policing, but they provide everything, unlike us. With our fire contract, they provide the equipment, and we pay the personnel expenses with the sheriff's office and their law enforcement contract. The sheriff provides everything, the cruisers, the jail, and all those things, so it's, it's, you can't do a fair comparison.
Thank you, it's just that that's been in the news lately about when they put out, no one else came forward to see if they wanted to take the police department part of their activities, so they are going back to the sheriff. Any other questions about doing this is one, two, three? Hearing none, that's me with Jeff. And then just a reminder, when we have the adjournment, Jessica, that's you with Vinnie as the second. You know, the most important part, because we have a presidential debate and a football game. What an evening tonight, is that weird? Is there any other legislation I hadn't heard from anyone? If not, I will resend out next week, on the twenty-ninth, at six P.M. We've already got all the invites from Kyle, thank you, Kyle. Then November fifth, November twelfth, December third, and December tenth. At next, our regular meeting on the twelfth, we will be making a motion to cancel our meeting due to Thanksgiving, and also the last meeting in December due to Christmas. And then January, I think we're okay, we're far enough from the first of the year that we can do and go right into, I would say, normal, but we probably will still be virtual in January. I've not seen this changing, especially since they added more today, and there's a couple counties on the cusp of purple. That's not a good thing, so stay healthy, and is, wear your mask when you go outside. And if you come to the grocery store to say hello, I won't be able to hear you, because we have the mask and we have the plastic, so we're both protected, which I love, but makes it real hard to hear. Mayor, is there anything else you have?
Yeah, just one quick thing, because you kinda touched on it. If, if we're to come back into this building, as you and I discussed, I don't know if you had a conversation with council, but we're gonna have to change a lot of things and purchase significant equipment to make that happen. So, if the intent or the thought was that we're gonna come back in January and do that, we ought to be talking now about the costs associated with that, and Kyle could probably give a little bit more insight on that, but we were, cameras and things like that are gonna be important, because we have stuff that have to have people spread apart. You have to keep in mind that if we have masks on, which we require in this building, the sound's gonna be an issue potentially, so we may have to address that as well. So, I wanna at least put that out there, if that's the thought, to go back in January.
Right, and that's what I thought would be part of the capital budget. And I've already touched about the fact depending on the dollar amount and what, working with Amanda, we need in council. Council may take part of their normal budget and put towards it, since it is council meetings. The only thing is those cameras can also be used for other meetings that go to the public, such as the infamous Parks and Rec could come in there if they wanted. You know, we have the Planning Commission, we have the Board of Zoning Appeals, so there are various other committees that could use it also. So, mayor, and I have been in discussion with that, and I look forward to seeing what the dollar proposal is. Before I forget too, Amanda is gonna be looking at the council budget for capital improvements. Amanda, are you in the office?
Right now.
Oh, I was gonna say, you, you could show them your new array, well, she hasn't moved it yet, but the computer that was no longer being used by her, Kyle has taken that, and she's lost the piece of a desk, so she's gonna move her furniture around a little, gives her a little more room. And she may even be able to make it that she gets to see the sunshine if we move it the right way. She'll be able to greet people and also look out the window. And when you work virtual, or you work in an office alone, I don't know how many ever worked in a cubicle. Worst thing ever is a cubicle. I've worked several years, and what do you look at? Walls. So, Amanda, if you have things that you're thinking of that maybe council needs as a capital improvement, please let Amanda know, because she, she and I are gonna get together to discuss the fact, it's not just what's gonna happen into the actual room, but what we commit, you know, the council chambers, we wanna make sure that we've got everything covered. Twenty-twenty-one may not be the best time to spend money, but we wanna see what we may need versus the dollars that come in.
Do you have any idea what is left in, in our budget in the, as far as the council's budget?
We're usually pretty much right on the number. I will double-check it, but we're usually right there in the number. Our personal service was a hundred, or, we had a hundred thirteen thousand six. The amended appropriation, we're saying a hundred seventeen, so we really haven't spent that much more, and we're right on track.
Did her laptop come out of our budget or IT's?
I don't know. We, we gave her back the computer, so it's almost a fair swap.
Kyle, do you, because I didn't write anything up for that. Kyle, for that computer, what did that come out of? Or did we just have that computer?
I believe it came out of my budget. And no, that would not be a, a straight swap for that doorstop that I received from your office.
Right, no.
That's a doorstop valued at zero dollars.
Come on, Kyle, show us what you're worth on eBay.
A penny? Do you guys wanna pay the shipping on a penny item?
That's one of those items you have to pay someone to take away.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, old technology, you get rid of.
Kyle, friend in the background, hi, Leah.
If you have thoughts of things that may need to be, that you would like to see, let's get them with Amanda, so she and I can review them. The one thing that we are really gonna review, though, is the cameras and the ability to live broadcast from the council chambers.
That's a lot of money, Jan, a lot, 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 a lot of money. And you guys need software, I would say you need software before cameras, to be honest. You guys need a agenda man, a, a meeting agenda management software before you, I would say before you invest in audio/video stuff, but that's just my.
Is there a reason why we cannot broadcast now from the council? We have cameras in there, we put the TVs up with videos and outside.
Yeah, you don't, you have analog cameras that are a closed circuit that I have to do a lot of post-editing on before a video can be put online. It's not a system, they're not HD cameras, and it's not a system that's made to live broadcast anything. VHS quality.
We, we need to do an investment between council and City Hall, because this could go on for another year. And I, you know, we have to have that ability. Or if we go back to regular, we have to find, hopefully, the governor will give us an ability to let some people in. We usually never got warm-town visitors, and even that's probably a pretty high number, since unfortunately, two of our regulars are now visiting the Council of Heaven. Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll, you have two minutes. Be back for the mayor to start the meeting, and we'll talk in two minutes.
The boys have been pretty good so far, huh, Jess?
I missed the beginning of your sentence.
The boys have been pretty good so far.
Yes, they got a little freaked out in between. I couldn't let them outside in between the meetings, otherwise they would have not come back in. They don't like me talking at, at nothing. They won't come back in.
Gotcha.
So, Jessica, there's a new function on here, if you go up to the three dots, and you click on it, and you do the together mode, it's, it's really neat, and it was really fun to do that with some of the staff this week, so if you check that out, you may enjoy that, so.
Not during the meeting, though, right?
Well, it doesn't ma, I don't think it matters during the meeting. It's only gonna be for the presenter, so it's not gonna change anything, it actually gives you a view of everybody. Kinda neat. We all, we all kinda got a kick out of it, so I thought you might enjoy that.
How'd you get to it?
If you click on the three dots.
Yeah.
Next to the hand, and click together mode. Next to the hand and click together mode.
I don't think I have it.
You may need to update your app, sir.
I may have to do that. You're right.
Yeah, I don't have it either. I'm a fan of large gallery mode because then you see everybody.
That is the funniest thing ever. That is great.
I figured you guys would like that, so.
Oh, my gosh.
Man, now I want to upgrade, but it's already seven thirty-one.
That's going to kill you the whole meeting now. All right, I'm going to get things started, guys. Hello and welcome to the October twenty-second council meeting. It is seven thirty-one PM. Will Ms. Traska please call the roll?
Ms. Brandt?
Here.
Mr. Finley?
Here.
Mr. Garvis?
Here.
Ms. Tully?
Here.
And Mr. Ventura?
Here.
Thank you. Next up is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In two republics which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, do I have an approval of the minutes from October eighth, two thousand twenty?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the regular meeting of October eighth, twenty twenty minutes as submitted by the Clerk of Council.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting minutes are approved. Next up is public comments. Ms. Traska, do we have any public comments this evening?
No, we do not.
Okay. And I will move right into a proclamation. The proclamation is for Stormwater Awareness Week. Whereas urban storm water runoff impacts water quality and water sheds in Macedonia. And whereas population growth, residential and commercial development, and the resulting changes to the landscape will only increase stormwater quality and quantity concerns throughout Ohio. And whereas these impacts cannot be entirely avoided or eliminated, but can be minimized. And whereas it is currently recognized that the control of stormwater quantity and quality is most effectively implemented when people and organizations understand the related causes and consequences of polluted water runoff and flooding and the actions they can take to control these. And whereas the need arises not only from the regulatory requirements of EPA general construction and municipal stormwater rules, but also from the recognition that citizens and local decision makers will benefit from a greater awareness of how the cumulative impacts of decisions at home, at work, and through local policies impact our water quality, stream corridors, and flooding. And whereas the development and implementation of effective outcome-based stormwater education and outreach programs will meet the federal stormwater pollution control requirements and those of communities they serve so that Ohio continues to be a great place to live, work, and play. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Macedonia joins soil and water conservation districts in communities across Ohio and recognize in the week of October eighteenth through the twenty-fourth as Stormwater Awareness Week. Okay, we're going to move right into pending or new legislation. First up is ordinance number sixty-two.
I'd like to offer ordinance number sixty-two, twenty twenty, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance amending ordinance number ninety-two dash twenty nineteen relative to current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Macedonia for the period of January first, twenty twenty, to December thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Director Veras?
Thank you, Mayor. We went over this in the caucus, some of the major points. You see some large numbers here, but it's it's actually large numbers that we're using to pay off some old debt and refund it. In layman's terms, that's refinancing. We will be saving combined over five hundred sixty thousand dollars by doing this for the two thousand ten bond series, along with the Ariel Tower refundings. We added some money to wrap up our salt contract purchases that we have to acquire salt, you know, by our contract, our minimums that we have to buy. And a fourth leg of the CARES Act money was received. So we have to show that as revenue and show the expense of four hundred thirty-two thousand, four hundred twenty-nine dollars.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move that we pass and post according to law. Ordinance number sixty-two, twenty twenty, please.
Second.
Sorry, my mute button went off. Ms. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
And Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Ordinance sixty-two passes. Ordinance sixty-three.
I move to offer ordinance sixty-three, twenty twenty, for its first, second, and third readings by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 An ordinance providing, I'm sorry, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum aggregate principal amount of one million, two hundred and ten thousand to refund all or a portion of the city's fire truck acquisition bonds, Series twenty nineteen, and declaring an emergency.
Director Veras?
Thank you, Mayor. As mentioned in the amendment, ordinance number sixty-two, we're saving an estimated six eighty thousand dollars of the five hundred sixty thousand on this piece here for refunding slash refinancing the fire truck acquisition bonds from two thousand nineteen.
And I want to thank you, Director Veras, for identifying this and putting the work in to save us those dollars. You're always looking for ways to improve upon our debt load and wherever we can save money. So I want to thank you for all your hard work on that and getting this done for us.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move to adopt ordinance sixty-three, twenty twenty, and post the same according to law.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
And Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Ordinance sixty-three passes. Ordinance number sixty-four.
Mayor, I'd like to move to offer ordinance sixty-four, twenty twenty, for all three readings by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum aggregate principal amount of five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to pay costs of acquiring and installing and otherwise improving the city's communication systems utilized by the police and fire departments and declaring an emergency. And also, I am in full receipt of the fully executed fiscal officer's certificate.
Thank you. Director Veras?
Thank you, Mayor. This money, five hundred seventy-five thousand, will be borrowed over a five-year period, will be paid out of the Safety Service Fund that was created at the beginning of two thousand nineteen. Total purchase cost of the communication system is not to exceed six hundred forty-one thousand. So we're not borrowing all of the money. We're paying cash for some of the acquisition. And I ask for passage tonight.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I'm sorry. I would move to adopt ordinance sixty-four, twenty twenty, and pass the same according to law.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
And Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Ordinance number sixty-four passes. Resolution number sixty-five.
I move to present resolution number sixty-five, twenty twenty, for its first, second, and third readings by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the Summit County Fiscal Office.
Director Veras, you're very popular this evening, so why not have another? You're muted, sir. I think you may not realize that.
Oh, I did the opposite. Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. The rates for the county that we're authorizing here are two point five three mils for the general fund, of which point three goes towards fire pension. And then that generates about one point two million. And the point three mils for the police pension, which has its own pension fund, generates about two hundred thousand a year. These are statutory. And these rates do not include the levy that expires at the end of the year and is on the ballot in November.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move to pass resolution sixty-five, twenty twenty, and post the same according to law.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
No.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
And Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Resolution number sixty-five passes. Resolution number sixty-six.
I'd like to offer resolution number sixty-six, twenty twenty, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A resolution confirming the appointment of Melissa N. Hunter to the City of Macedonia Civil Service Commission.
So we have the opening from the retirement of Mr. Menhart. Mrs. Hunter had thrown her name into the hat. She has been very active in our community, and I think she'll be a great addition to the Civil Service Commission. And I look forward to hopefully having a passage for this evening. And I would welcome her at that point. Is there any other discussion?
I would just like to thank Mrs. Hunter for, you know, volunteering her time to be a part of this commission. Residents don't know, this is the commission that verifies the hiring of police and fire and dispatch too, sir.
Yes.
Yes, so it's very important to our community. And and I thank her for volunteering her time to be part of this.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move to adopt resolution sixty-six, twenty twenty, and post the same according to law.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
And Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Thank you and welcome, Mrs. Hunter, to the Civil Service Commission. We look forward to having you, sir, and thank you for that as well. Resolution number sixty-seven.
I'd like to offer resolution number sixty-seven, twenty twenty, for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Sagamore Hills Township to provide dispatch services.
So this is obviously a renewal of the dispatch contract that we had with Sagamore Hills. Just to put it in perspective, in the year of twenty-one, they will be paying eighty-seven, four sixteen. Twenty-two will be ninety thousand, forty dollars. Twenty-three will be ninety-two thousand, seven hundred forty. Twenty-four will be ninety-five thousand, five hundred twenty. Twenty-twenty-five will be ninety-eight, three eighty-four. Essentially, it's a three percent increase. They're also going to be beginning to support our maintenance costs of our equipment. If they do choose to leave us for any reason, they have a ninety-day window to do that. And we do keep all of our equipment. But we appreciate the partnership and collaboration with our neighbor, and we look forward to continuing that. Is there any other comments or suggestions? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
Yes, and we pass and post according to law. Resolution number sixty-seven, twenty twenty, please.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Finley?
Yes.
Mr. Garvis?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
And Mr. Ventura?
Yes.
Resolution number sixty-seven passes, and we look forward to that collaboration, as I've already stated. Are there any other motions or legislative actions? Hearing none, is there any correspondence to the clerk?
No, I don't have any.
Yeah, we'll move right into the mayor's report. As we all are painfully aware, there's an election coming up. It's been a quite contentious year for everyone. I would encourage everyone to get out and vote. The one that I want to talk about and spend the majority of my time is Issue Twenty, which is on the ballot. It's a renewal for our general fund. It's it's dollars that we desperately need to utilize to keep our our functions alive with police, fire, and service. There's no increase. It's a renewal. I want to drive that home and say that repeatedly because I want to make sure people understand what it is and and why we need it. These are dollars that we've used since the eighties to support the functions of this city. I would encourage everyone to vote on that and vote yes on it because we need those dollars to keep these services alive. And it's very, very important for us to recognize the the need and what we do it for. To be very clear, the renewal without an increase for a hundred thousand dollar home is less than three dollars per month. So I want to put that in perspective. Less for a hundred thousand dollar home, three dollars per month. So it's a very nominal cost that supports our operations, and I would encourage you to support that. Second thing I want to touch on is Halloween is October thirty-first. From six to eight, we will have trick or treat. At this point, I've had many questions come from the community about whether it's going to be canceled or not. Summit County Public Health, at this point, has given us the green light. We are continuing on with that green light. We have this collaboration with all the Nordonia communities outside of Boston Heights. They are all having it on Saturday, October thirty-first, between six and eight PM. I would encourage you that if you do not want to hand candy out, please turn off your porch light. That's the indication for children to come onto your porch to trick or treat. And if you don't want your children to trick or treat, don't send them. It's really in your hands to what you want to do. I would encourage you to follow safety protocols. I can tell you that my wife gets a little, I don't want to say crazy, but she's very concerned with everything going on in the world. So if my children decide to go out or she allows that, she takes the wipes and cleans off every piece of candy. And, you know, we do all that. So that's just something that we do in my family. So if you choose to go out, I just ask you to be safe and follow the safety protocols. And last but not least, please don't drive distracted. Put down the phones and drive the vehicle. Moving into committee reports.
Parks and Rec Committee had their October meeting yesterday. It was our first virtual meeting. I am very proud to say all of our members made it to the virtual meeting. We got, we were able to all get together. It was the first meeting for a new member, Jason Hagg. And it was it was a good, short meeting. We just kind of went over stuff that we've been talking about all year. We're excited about progress. Things have been ordered and shipped to Parks or the Park Service Department. We're getting new trash bins installed that are a little bit more raccoon safe so we won't have some trash be floating around the park. And we're also getting dog trash bins. Service Department will be installing trees to block the Home Days Field from eighty-two. Home Days Field by itself is not quite an eyesore, but the huge mound of very valuable, yet unsightly road stuff, road shavings is sitting there. So the Parks and Rec Committee decided that it would be nice to have trees there to block it. So that will be coming soon. And we had some great reports about some updates that are going on at the rec center from Mr. Chaddick and some events that they're doing and and some capital improvements they're doing to the building finally. So it was an excellent meeting, like I said. And we will have our next meeting, which might be our final one for the year, the third Wednesday of November. Kyle Collins was nice enough to set up a webpage for us to publish that, links to that meeting. So if you go to the meeting portal on Macedonia dot O H dot U S, you'll be able to find a link to that if you would like to join us as a member of the public in that meeting. And that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brandt. Any other committee reports? Hearing none, I'll move right into department reports. And first up is Mr. Gelati, Engineering.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, everyone. Tonight, just want to provide a few stats from the road program. All the roadwork we did this year. Seven roads total in the city were completely repaved. Also, the driveway to Windmill Golf Course and the soccer fields was also repaved. Eleven roads were crack sealed. Thirty-one catch basins around the city were repaired. Two crossover drainage culvert pipes on Cherokee Drive were replaced. All of the side streets received new white edge lines. And several roads across the city received asphalt spot patching to try to give our residents a smoother ride and also reduce the amount of pothole patching that our service department has to do over the winter. So another successful road program this season, I believe. Thank you to all who support the road program. End of report.
Thank you, Joe. Just to be clear, since I think around, what, 2018, we've paved over, what, 70 roads?
Sixty-three roads, I believe, at my last count, so it's a lot of roads. More than anyone else around, certainly.
That's something to be proud of, and we thank them for passing that quarter percent to allow us to do that, and I thank you for your work to help facilitate that.
Agreed. Thank you.
Next up is Director Verris.
I need a comfy couch, like Joe.
You're not the camera. We don't want to hear from you.
All right, here we go. I didn't want to show my, you know, non-comfy couch, but on the agenda tonight, we have some amendment. We have an amendment to the budget, which accounts for two refundings that that I proposed to council. One you've already approved. One is on was on the agenda tonight that you approved again. The 2010 refunding saved us over 480,000, I believe, and the aerial aerial tower refunding will save over 80,000. So that's a combined 560,000 of savings. And I appreciate your support of those refundings. As I mentioned, refunding is is, to layman's terms, it's refinancing your debt. But you can't do it as often in the government setting, so maybe that's why they chose the word "refunding." We also have some debt, new debt, for the communication system. It was ordinance number 64 that you guys passed that will update our dispatch center, and total cost of the project is about 641,000. We'll be borrowing 575,000 of that over a five-year period and pay for that out of the Safety Service Fund that the residents were so kind to pass the last quarter percent. Collection started for that quarter percent in January of 2019. End of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Director Collins?
It would help if I unmuted myself. Thank you, Mayor. The only major thing I have to report is, as Councilmember Brandt mentioned, I did create a meeting portal page on our website, just to try to make it easier for the public to find the meetings so that they can take part in our digital form of government. I can pull it up right here. And so if you go to our website now, along the top, located at the end, we have a link for the meeting portal. If you click on it, you'll get the breakdown of the different types of meetings we have: City Council, Building and Engineering, and then the separate committees. So in the future, if anybody in the public is looking for any information on any meeting, an archival video, or to join a meeting live, just check out the meeting portal link on the city's website. And that's all. Thanks. End of report.
One more thing, Mr. Collins, and I hate to cut you off guard, but where are we at in terms of our technological upgrades? Are we on pace for, you communicate to the public where we're at in terms of that process?
I would say that we're a lot further along than I thought we would be at this point. I found a couple of other major Achilles heel heels that I was not aware of at the beginning of the projects. But from an infrastructure standpoint, we're 1,000% better. And we now have the backbone and the infrastructure in place to allow us to move forward with major software upgrades for departments, which are going to maybe not be something that the public sees much effect from, but it will make things smoother and more efficient for all the departments. So I know the Building Department is slated to get an upgrade early or early to mid next year, and the Finance Department is also looking at a software upgrade. So after those two fall in place, I'll reassess the the software situations for all the other departments. But I would say, yes, we're a lot further along than I thought we would be. Knock on wood. Hopefully, we have no more setbacks.
I want to thank you for all your work, and it's the little things that add up to a lot, including like the Wi-Fi extenders you put all over the building. I know in the past when I've had troubles in these meetings where, you know, I'm here at City Hall and it's starting to blink, and those Wi-Fi extenders we put all over the building, including down in council chambers and in that area. So when you guys come in next time, if you want to use your laptops or your iPads or whatever you have, they're going to work a lot better because the internet's going to be a lot more robust and be able to operate the way it's intended to. So thank you for all your work with that, sir. We do appreciate it.
We also, we actually also have, we now have public Wi-Fi available in City Hall. That was something we didn't have, and that was one of I think it was my first or second council meeting, I had a a parent approach me and ask me what the public Wi-Fi was so that his son could do homework during the council meeting that he was forcing him to sit through, and unfortunately, I had to tell him we did not have public Wi-Fi. So once City Hall reopens to everybody, I look forward to everybody getting to use our public Wi-Fi for in-person meetings and, you know, outside, waiting for court, waiting for, you know, a police officer, a fire department, anybody. I do look forward to hopefully giving the public a little bit more digital service, and I'm looking forward to also extending that to as much coverage as possible in the park. So as you walk around the park and maybe watch your kids play baseball, you'll have reliable public Wi-Fi available for you as well.
Thank you. That's good stuff. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Director Chaddick.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know how I top Wi-Fi in public parks. I'll certainly, I'll certainly attempt to, though. Special thanks to Councilmembers Tully, Garvis, and Brandt, as well as Park and Rec Commissioner, Park and Rec Commission Members Jason Hack and Barbie for helping us out with the voting on the Haunted Yard contest that we published from the Rec Center. We are down to our final two candidates, and that will be posted to social media tomorrow for the community to vote on their favorite haunted yard in the city of Macedonia. So that'll be out to the public tomorrow. I wanted to take a moment to highlight the membership sale I had updated you guys on before the night of council, as well as the next day. On Friday, we sold some additional memberships. In total, the week of October 5th, we sold 60 memberships to the Rec Center. And that equated to 30 annual memberships, 24 one month, and then six other discounted memberships sold. Definitely really excited about that. We've noticed an increase in participation of recreation facilities and classes in the last two weeks as the weather's turned. So in the COVID environment, it's good to see some people coming back inside, taking proper precautions, and getting their health and fitness and of their daily duties taken care of. I'd like to highlight the Quinian Replacement Plan that we've been working on since the day I got here. It's really exciting for the staff. We have worked with some companies that we previously bought equipment from, and we've actually discovered some of the pieces of cardio equipment are as many as 16 to 18 years old. And that's very old for a piece of equipment. That's older than my kids. And it's time for an upgrade on some of these pieces. We currently have demo units at the front desk area that we would like our community to try out. We have a Precourt AMT and an Octane XT-1. These will serve as replacements for existing EFX machines, as well as ellipticals. And I know I probably sound like an I chart right now. I promise I don't come from the medical field. We have looked high and low for different pieces of equipment that can be equivalent replacements, yet modernized us to get good workouts that'll serve the purposes of fitness today. And we feel pretty confident in these potential replacements. We're letting the community give their feedback on these, as well as vote for which one of the machines they like the best. So we are looking to utilize this opportunity to auction off some old equipment, as well as use our capital funds to purchase a couple of new pieces, both this year and 2020, as well as in 21. So we'll give you guys more information on that moving forward. The second-floor carpet replacement starts tomorrow. They are actually coming in to do some work on the downstairs aerobics room. They will be tearing out the rubberized wood-looking floor that's in there that's been a little bit defective for us. They're going to be tearing out that floor and putting in a new one, as well as we're going to repurpose some of that floor that was good, and we're going to put it in the massage room so we can have a hard surface in the massage room that can be appropriately mopped and sanitized. And then upstairs, we'll start next week. On Monday through Friday of next week, we'll do Pod 2 to start, which is where most of the cardio equipment is, as well as the old white-framed Nautilus equipment. And then we'll progress to Pod 1, which has all the treadmills in it. And then finally, we'll conclude with replacing the carpet in the median right way there. So that will be taking place all of next week. And I wanted to take a quick moment to highlight the Halloween drive-through photo op that we have at Longwood Park coming up this Saturday from 2:00 to 6:00. It's an opportunity for you to drive through, see some beautiful scenery, and get your photo taken right from your vehicle. Bring your family. Each of the kids that attends will get a bag of candy that staff has been working on packing during the course of this week. So if it's a timeframe that you don't want to go out and trick-or-treat due to the COVID environment, certainly feel free to come by Longwood Park on Saturday afternoon and pick up a bag of candy. It'll be a one-stop shop instead of going to 80 different houses. So this is another opportunity for the community, and we'll be giving those pictures to the families. And then the final piece that I wanted to cover for everyone is the hot tub. We've gone through three phases of testing. We have found all the different leaks we believe that are taking place within the hot tub. We are currently obtaining bids from multiple companies for the work that will need done. And what we are looking at right now is most likely at least a six-to-eight-week project to get the hot tub fixed. We will have more information on that at the next council meeting, once we have all the bids in place. That concludes my report today.
Thank you. That's an awful lot, and thank you for all you're doing. Director Nadavang.
Thank you, Mayor. On this coming Monday, the 26th, we will begin our leaf collection program by sending only one unit out in the community. We ask that, as always, the piles no more than 10 feet in width from the edge of the road or the curb. Do not place them into the streets, into tight lines, and keep them away from mailboxes, street poles, fire hydrants, things in the street, to allow us to continue with our pickup and try not to delay as much as possible. As the leaves fall down more, we will bring out more crews. We have four machines ready to go. And I hope we'll be able to stay on top of this. Again, as always, our collection will go as long as the weather allows. I mean, this is Ohio, so we can see white stuff in two weeks, but let's hope not. You never know. We will continue to pick up as long as the weather holds out for us. And one thing I'd like to add, I'd like to give a compliment to our IT Director, Kyle Collins. This year, we have a different feature on our website, on the City of Macedonia website, under the Service Department. Street activity sheet that he created is an interactive map that you'll be able to go on to see in real time where our leaf unit is during the day for pickup. See where they are in the city, if they're coming into your area or not. And, you know, the mayor and I had approached this conversation. We went to Kyle about it. Asked something to be done in that day. At the end of the day, he had something created. We're looking forward to using that. So thank you, Kyle. And that's all I have, Mayor.
And just to elaborate on that a little bit, every year, we try to improve our communications with the leaf pickup program because there's always the you know, a lot of folks say, "Well, you didn't come on my house." With what we have proposed this year and what's on our website, and by the way, if you go to macedonia.oh.us, under the Service Department, you can go to the Leaf Collection tab. If you click on that, there's four zones in city that will show where the truck has been and where it's going. So it actually leaves the cookies on there, so you'll know if they've passed your house, and it can kind of give you an indication that they're probably not going to be back there potentially for a little bit of time. But here, this is a good illustration of what we have now. I guess it's not cooperating. So if you look at the map there, there's the four locations around town, and again, it'll leave the cookies on there and show you where they've been. So if you have any question about where they're at or if they've been there yet, this will be the best place to check to see that because there's going to be no better or cleaner information as to where our service department has been at that point. So thank you for sharing that, Mr. Collins.
And unfortunately, those maps just show me walking around City Hall, testing it. So once they're in vehicles, it'll look a lot better than that.
Right. Thank you, sir. All right, next up is Mrs. Smith, our HR manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. HR has continued to work with our new HR software. Currently, we are trying to get all of our forms and information all in the system so that our employees can have a one-stop shop. And what I mean by that is there, it will enable them to pull forms, to have information, to look at their insurance, to make changes within the system, and will no longer have to have paper forms sitting around and everyone having maybe different versions of a form. So it's our goal to have at least 75% of this up and running by the end of the year. Currently working, obviously, with our broker on finalizing and looking at our benefits for next year, and that's ongoing as well. And lastly, I have finalized all the details for the flu shot and our biometric testing, as well as our Employee Appreciation Week, which is going to take place November 2nd through November 6th. And that's it for my report, Mayor.
So what you're telling me is we kick off Employee Appreciation Week with a big poke of a needle?
That is correct, Mayor.
Well, thank you for that. I'm sure they're thrilled. I know I am not. All right, next up is Chief Ripley.
Thank you, Mayor. Unfortunately, it seems like the theme of all of our meetings, COVID is back. It's back with a storm. We're dealing with more and more cases every day. From a public safety standpoint, I would ask that you'd wear your masks to protect our staff. It's a lot of work from our end, disinfecting squads and the staff themselves when they deal with the case. It is in our communities. We are dealing with it. Do not hesitate to call us. We will come out. We have the tools. Just protect yourself to protect your neighbors and your family and our staff if you do need to call us. Trick-or-treat. Whether you're out on the street or not, trick-or-treating, please be aware of the kids in the street. They're children. They're out having fun. They don't always pay the close attention as they should. So we need to be hyper vigilant if we are driving to make sure they're safe. Flashlights normally are our fall party. We make sure we give them something that's reflective and it illuminates when they're out trick-or-treating. We could not do that this year, so please, if your children go out, make sure they are marked so they could be seen in traffic when they do things that kids do. I'd like to thank council for passing the dispatch contract with Sagamore. That directly affects the Fire Department from a standpoint of they dispatch all of our calls into Sagamore and dealing with one dispatch center who's very good at what they do is very much a huge help to our staff out in the field and is much appreciated. So they really appreciate that. Last but not least, I'd like to welcome Melissa. Last but not least, I'd like to welcome Melissa to the Civil Service Commission. I see MH down at the bottom of my screen, so I'm assuming it's Melissa. I've known Melissa for a few years now, she's going to be a great addition, and I very much look forward to working with her. And other than that, have everybody have a happy Halloween. End of report, Mayor.
Chief, I think, I think that time is changing next weekend. Do you have any suggestions for how people should celebrate?
You are right. I think we should change the batteries in our smoke detectors. Thank you very much, I, I was thinking we still had a few weeks. It seems like it's early this year to me, I don't know why. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. And as you so eloquently stated, you know, the safety of, of our employees in this building is why City Hall is still closed. We, we are trying to keep as, as many people out of this building because our safety forces operate out of here. So thank you for bringing that up and pointing that out because your safety is paramount to the safety of the community and as well as dispatch and our police department. So thank you for bringing reference to that, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, Chief Golden?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to welcome Melissa to the Civil Service Commission. We'll be working together here shortly, so welcome aboard. I'd also like to thank council for passing the dispatch contract with Sagamore. It's very important that we're on the same frequency, we all work together. The folks that are in Sagamore and Northfield come through Macedonia. So it's a very important contract for police and for fire. If they would get somebody else to dispatch for them, it would just be longer response times for their residents. So thanks again for passing that. And I just want to remind everybody, like Chief Ripley said, slow down for Halloween next Saturday. A lot of kids will be out there, and they get excited and they start dashing across the street. A lot of them are wearing dark clothing, and they, they don't happen to look sometimes. So just be careful, if you can, stay off the road during trick or treat. I think it's 6:30 to 8:30, Mayor?
It is 6:00 to 8:00, sir.
6:00 to 8:00, thank you. If you can, just stay off the street at that time, and just be extra careful. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. And last but not least, Director Ghadetti?
Thank you, Mayor. A little bit astounded that Chief Ripley forgot about the smoke detectors, but I'll try to make it through my report here. Definitely want to thank Kyle for the meeting portal. I can tell you, I don't only look for the city's meetings on the website pretty often, but do that with a number of communities, and that's a great asset to have, both for us and for the residents. Aside from that, I know I mentioned at the last meeting that council can expect to see an ordinance regarding the sign code definitions. The city planner and I are still fine-tuning that. As soon as it's ready, I'll send it out. I hope to send it out early prior to the next meeting. If there's any questions, council can feel free to reach out to me. And aside from that, I'll just add that I actually had a direct exposure for COVID. I was around somebody who ended up having it. Luckily, I was able to quarantine, I ended up not having any symptoms or not having it, but I did follow the protocols. I had the mask on, social distance, sanitized frequently, so it really does work, and I encourage everybody to do that.
Thank you, appreciate it. And next up is unfinished business. Hearing none, any new business?
I'd just like to remind everyone, even though our meetings are virtual, you can do public comments at the beginning of the meeting. Just let our council clerk know that you're going to be attending. It's limited to five minutes for your comments. And if you can't make the meeting, that's okay. If you'd like to have something read, you can also send correspondence to Amanda, and she will read that to all of us at the meeting. Your opinion and your voice is very important to us, and it's a very unusual time. So we want to make sure that you're encouraged to communicate. Thank you.
Thank you, any other new business? Hearing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? We are adjourned, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Night, Jonathan.